As I call the June 21 city council meeting to order. Due to the Governor's proclamation 20-28 relating to the COVID-19 emergency and open public meetings, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. At this point in time, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members in attendance. Please stay here when I call your name. Councilmember De Michelle.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Thank you. Council President Hunt.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Marks.
Here.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray.
Here.
Thank you. And Councilmember Walsh.
Here.
Thank you. That's all seven council members in attendance. I'd like to invite you to join me in the pledge of allegiance, but I'd ask you to mute your microphone. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is audience comments. And for those of you who have submitted our online form to make comments, your name will be called shortly. For those who have joined us tonight and would like to make comments but did not sign up in advance, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, try pressing star three. If you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This can vary by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raised hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. At tonight's council meeting, an informational presentation will be provided on an upcoming ballot item. I'd like to remind members of the public that comments related to a ballot measure or individual candidacy are not allowed during public comments. If the council wishes to consider formally supporting or opposing a ballot measure, a public hearing will be scheduled, and the public will be provided with an opportunity to comment in accordance with state law. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Yes.
Thank you. So for those making comments, please make sure to direct your comments to the whole council and not to individuals. And while this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When you are recognized, please unmute your microphone, state your name, address, and relationship to the city, and speak clearly and pause frequently. Please limit your comments to five minutes and re-mute your microphone when you're done. If you do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. You are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if you are able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Citizens' comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. The city takes these comments seriously, and we thank you for taking the time to address us this evening. City Clerk, can you please identify the first person who has signed up to speak? Yes, Kathy McCory. Kathy, I'm going to unmute you now. You have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Great to be here on this warm, happy Monday. Just a couple of quick items today. First, oh, I'm sorry, let me back up. Kathy McCory, Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce. I'm the CEO there, and I have an exciting announcement to make. This week, we are launching issaquajobs.com. We have been in touch with the business community about all the hiring and the jobs that are available in Issaquah right now, and we have come up with a website that will allow businesses to post their jobs. And residents, whether they're looking for returning to work, a new career shift, a part-time job, they will have a site geared specifically for Issaquah jobs so that they can go and find some new, exciting career path or job close to where they live. And again, we're excited to be launching that this week. Our other is just a comment of support on one of the agenda items this evening, AB-8193. Obviously, we will be in support of that and also in support of allocating $45,000 for the recovery coordinator position. We realize that the $11 million is not much when it comes to the city's overall budget. However, it can be quite substantial to us, and in the deliberations moving forward as opportunities identify themselves, we ask that the city continues to research, as they have already begun to do so. And let's not just recover what was lost during the pandemic, but let's truly reimagine what we need moving forward to remain the best place on the east side to live, work, and play. Let's be innovative, and together, we can rebuild a better future with that one-time money. I'd like to thank you again for all the work you do for our business community and our residents. We all appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. City Clerk, do we have anyone else signed up to speak this evening? No one else has indicated a desire to speak. Well, it was nice to hear from our chamber about the new Job Finder website that they have up, and also the support of the ARPA funding recommendations that are on the council's agenda this evening. As a reminder, you can also submit written comments at any time to citycouncil@issaquawa.gov. Council President Hunt, do you have any email comments that you would like to summarize on tonight's agenda topics?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did receive one email that specifically referenced items that are on our agenda this evening, and while we're doing virtual meetings, I have been summarizing emails that we receive specifically on agenda items. And in this email, the community member asked regarding AB-8158, which is Amend 2021 Salary Ordinance, that council ask questions confirming the need for effectively funding a new position. And then regarding AB-8192, which is Confirmation of Mayor's Appointment of City Clerk, expressed support. And that concludes emailed comments on tonight's agenda items.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. The next item on our agenda this evening is committee and regional reports, and I will be calling each council member by name, starting with Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember Hall. I have two quick reports for the council this evening. First, for Cascade Water Alliance, the next board meeting is virtually this Wednesday at 3:30 PM. I'll note that I'll give you a more in-depth update at tonight's Good of the Order. Mayor Polly and I would like to get your feedback over the next couple of months regarding the Lake Taps Reservoir Project. So this will be fun. So stay tuned for that later tonight. Affordable Housing Committee, the Affordable Housing Committee of the Growth Management Planning Council is meeting next Wednesday, July 21 at noon, and there's no agenda there yet, so stay tuned. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Councilmember De Michelle.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember De Michelle. On June 9, I attended the Connect2 Community Advisory Group, which is charged with overseeing the development of a health community information exchange network for King County. We continued our dialogue on how to protect privacy at the same time we make information more available and accessible to both patients and practitioners. On June 10, I attended the Eastside Transportation Partnership. We met with Congresswoman Del Benny for a report on the Biden Administration infrastructure initiatives. And then finally, a meeting of the Eastside Human Services Forum Board of Directors is scheduled for this Thursday, June 24. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. On Wednesday the 9th, the Council Rules Ad Hoc Committee met and discussed the Council New Business Action and Form along with several housekeeping changes. Those changes are set to come back to the full council during our meeting on July 6. We also recognize that there was potentially a future discussion about the remote meeting participation, and since that covered council members, staff, and the public, we decided that, or recommended that, the conversation belonged in a public meeting with the full council and not the ad hoc committee or Council Rules Committee. On the 10th, the Title 18 Ad Hoc Committee met, that's our group of three council members working on Title 18, which is our land use and zoning code. We discussed the next iteration of the SIGN Code. That iteration continues with our feedback and is scheduled to return to full council during the study session on July 27. We also discussed PPC, the Planning Policy Commission's feedback from their initial Title 18 overview, and the need for an upcoming PPC discussion on land use sustainability and equity, which I believe has now been scheduled. And on Friday, the 18th, I attended the Issaquah Chamber of Commerce Board meeting and reviewed with them the School Resource Officer Conversation, the upcoming SIGN Code meeting with the council. And then City Administrator Bob Quitz also provided information on the City Hall reopening plan, and the chamber asked questions about the Equity Board and what their focal area and responsibilities would be. And that concludes my report.
Thanks, Councilmember Walsh. The first ad hoc reference back to July 6 is likely July 19 because the city council meeting for the 6th has been canceled. Thanks for giving me an opportunity to say that. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Here, no report.
Thank you. Councilmember Marks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Marks. The Fugit Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board will be meeting on Thursday, July 1 from 10 a.m. until noon, and the agenda has not been published for that meeting yet. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee met Wednesday, June 9 at 7 p.m. online, and no action was taken. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Marks. Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Chris Ray. The King County Growth Management Planning Council will be meeting this Wednesday, June 23rd, from 4 to 6 p.m. in a virtual format. There are two significant agenda items on this meeting. One is the draft urban growth capacity report, which is proposed to be adopted, and also the proposed 2021 county-wide planning policies that were also planning to be adopted at that time. That concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Deputy Council President Ray. And Council President Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Council President Hunt. I have one report this evening. The King Conservation District Advisory Committee met on June 8. We took one action at that meeting, which was to approve a statement in support of working towards having the King County, the King Conservation District Advisory, sorry, King Conservation District Board of Supervisors election be on a regular ballot. And so we approved a statement to that effect, and we'll work with the state legislature on that over the summer and in the coming months, because that would require a state action. And the next meeting for this advisory committee has not yet been set.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Council President Hunt. The next item on our agenda this evening is the mayor's report. So earlier this evening, we did have an executive session. It was held to discuss collective bargaining per RCW 42.3, .140 per N4, and pending potential litigation per RCW 42.30, .110 per N1 per NI. One of my newsy items is I'd like to say thank you for the invitation to attend last Friday night's Juneteenth celebration in the Issaquah Highlands. Councilmember Kimberly, I'm going to get this wrong, maybe Councilmember Walsh can help me. Kapistain? Did I get it? Okay. Kimberly Kapistain organized Issaquah's first-ever community Juneteenth remembrance in Highlands Park near Blakely Hall. The event offered information on the history of Juneteenth, a local band, and barbecue food truck, encouraging families to stay and picnic as we honor and celebrate the contributions of Black Americans to our community and our country. We're going to do a proclamation this evening on immigration reform, whereas the city of Issaquah advocates for a just and humane immigration system and calls on the United States Congress to enact and prioritize updated immigration policies to reflect current times and needs. And whereas COVID-19 has magnified the disproportionate inequities that exist for refugees and immigrants who call this country their home. And whereas it is a legislative responsibility to ensure that COVID-19 relief and recovery programs are available and accessible to all without discrimination or barriers based on citizenship, English proficiency, income, religious belief, race, ethnicity, gender, and sexual identity. And whereas 1 in 4 Issaquah residents is foreign-born, and our diversity will continue to grow as Issaquah is currently expanding at a rate of .070% annually, and its overall population has increased by 31.66% in the last 10 years. And whereas Issaquah thrives as a welcoming and inclusive community that is committed to foster a safe, vibrant, livable, and hate-free environment, and therefore denounces hateful rhetoric against immigrant and refugee communities. And whereas the city of Issaquah invites business leaders, civic groups, community institutions, legislators, and residents to join in a community-wide effort to adopt practices and policies that promote integration, inclusion, and equity. We at the city of Issaquah are committed to supporting refugees and immigrant communities, are zero tolerance towards hateful rhetoric against immigrants, and I call on the United States Congress to prioritize a comprehensive legislation on immigration that reflects current times and needs. I'd also like to give an update on the City Hall facilities reopening plan. Since the start of the pandemic, city offices have been closed to the public, and we have been providing service over email, the phone, or other teleconferencing platforms. With almost 80% of Issaquah residents fully vaccinated, Issaquah is emerging from the pandemic, and I'm excited to announce that starting July 6, City Hall will be open for in-person services, with some improvements to how we serve the Issaquah community. We are moving our permit center out of City Hall Northwest to consolidate with our downtown City Hall. This should help reduce confusion and travel for community members accessing these services. Our new hours for in-person services, starting on July 6, will be Monday through Thursday from 9 a.m. to 1 p.m. We will continue to provide services over email, phone, and teleconferencing outside of those hours as part of our normal operations. A few weeks ago, we conducted a customer survey and heard from you, the Issaquah community, that this hybrid service model, offering in-person services as well as virtual service, is what you want. More choices for accessing city services. We will reevaluate our service model and hours at the end of August and may make changes to ensure we are providing responsive and quality services. Throughout the pandemic, some city services were put on hold so that we could focus on our pandemic response and reducing the spread. I'm pleased to announce that starting July 6, the following services will once again be available in person. Over-the-counter permitting services and in-person meetings to discuss projects and permits, utility billing, concealed weapons permit applications, public record requests, and citizen clearance letters. Our parks and recreation programs in the municipal court have already been offering in-person services and will continue to do so. Upgrades are also underway in city buildings to allow for the first time in-person and virtual participation in city council and city board and commission meetings. Pending public health guidelines, we anticipate meeting in-person regularly again in September. I would like to take this opportunity to thank and recognize our employees who have continued to serve the community in-person throughout the pandemic, navigating pandemic protocols and taking on a greater risk to themselves and their families than those of us who were able to work from home. This includes our police, our public works staff, parks, and Eastside Fire and Rescue staff. Thank you very much. And thank you to Issaquah for your patience, diligence, and care for one another that I have seen demonstrated time and time again over the past year and a half. As we emerge from the pandemic, I look forward to seeing all of you in person again. Thank you, and that concludes the mayor's report. The next item on our agenda this evening are informational updates, and we'll be starting with ID 0929, Best Starts for Kids Levy, King County Proposition 1. This is a regular property tax levy for children, youth, families, and communities. At the May 17, 2021 council meeting under Good of the Order, city council requested an informational briefing from King County regarding the upcoming Best Starts for Kids Levy renewal. As a reminder, in accordance with state law, council is limited to hearing only factual information at this time. Council's discussion is also limited to general questions, not for making statements in support of or opposition to the ballot item. If council wishes to take a formal position on this item, direction can be provided to prepare a resolution in support or opposition and to schedule a related public hearing for July 19. This direction can be provided following the presentation or under Good of the Order this evening. Otherwise, this item remains as informational only. I'd like to invite Marcy Miller, Seattle and King County's Public Health Policy Manager, to present this item. Marcy.
Thank you so much for having me today. My name is, for the record, my name is Marcy Miller. I'm the Policy Manager at Seattle-King County Public Health and look forward to chatting with you all tonight. So we can go to the next slide. So Best Starts for Kids is our mission is happy, healthy, safe, and thriving. We want all, we want to see all babies born healthy, kids thrive, and young people grow up to be happy, healthy, successful adults. Next slide. We do this using four basic principles around promotion, prevention, early intervention, and policy and systems change. We really work to seek, we really seek to increase the good for our children and families, decrease the bad, intervene when we need, when there's extra support needed, and thinking about how do we change the systems and policies that really affect our children and needs today. Next slide. So our current levy was passed by the voters in 2015 and expires on December 31 of 2020. So we can go to the next slide. I wanted to show you what the current levy is doing. So it was $411 million over the life of the levy for the past six years, passed and again in 2015, so really 2016 to now. We have, we've been providing homelessness prevention support for $21 million, and this has supported 9,500 kids on the verge of homelessness, keeping out of homelessness through quality engagement and car payments, or whatever it would take to keep people out of the homelessness system. 50% of the money has been investing early, supporting parents and families and children where they're at, in their homes, in community, virtually now, of course, and supporting early intervention when more support is needed. 35% has been to sustain the gain from ages 5 to 24, so programming that ranges all the way from out-of-school time, school-based health centers, thinking about, all middle schools were offered support around ESPT, which is a screening and referral to training, or to referrals, looking at what do middle school kids need and, or what do middle school kids need in order to succeed. Communities matter, so thinking about specific place-based, focus on place-based learning in communities, getting together, and thinking about how do they support health and equities within their own community, and data and evaluation. So 5% of the levy has gone to tell the story. Next slide. So evaluation has been really important to the work of Best Starts for Kids. We are currently using, we are using a results-based accountability approach. So for every program that's funded, we ask three key questions. How much do we do? How well do we do it? And is anyone better off? And we use that data to tell, through quantitative and qualitative data, to really think about using it for quality improvement. All of our programs, we partner with them, and they have, they're pushing on headline indicators, which would be reducing infant mortality, that kind of work, at a really high level. Secondary indicators, how many screenings were happening within your program? And then every program has performance measures, so we can tell within every program where they, what success they have, how many kids they've been serving, and what do they need in order to, and what's been working well and what's been not working well within that program. Next slide. So I wanted to show you an overview by the numbers. We've funded over 654 different kinds of programming, partnered with over 360 community-based partners. In order for people to apply, we, for the program, and we had 7,000 hours of technical assistance. Over 500,000 youth and children have benefited for this, through this work. And over 24,000 people who work with kids and families have received training to support their equity lens and to be thinking about trauma-informed work. So next slide. So I want to tell you a little bit about what I know about Issaquah. In 2020, just under 1,000 children, youth, and parents and caregivers were funded by Best Starts in 98027 and 98029 ZIP codes. Examples of programs were play and learn groups, so families getting together, Help Me Grow Washington, which is really thinking about referrals. We had youth development programs for the youth, and home visiting, which would go into the homes and support families, parents, and caregivers. And I want to just say this is likely an undercount. I can explain more, but we're getting better as we move forward, and there's going to be more ZIP code reporting, so not all programs actually engaged in ZIP code level reporting. But this is what we know today. Next slide. So I want to show you, we had over 39 partners on the east side. All of them had to apply for funding, so the money, we would put out an RFP, and people would apply. We'd provide that technical assistance to help with writing. We know that can be cumbersome, and not all organizations actually have access to that. What I do know is that on the east side, just to be transparent, there were less applications than some of our other areas, but we are really committed to partnering with community to understand that better and do better outreach moving forward, and thinking about some of our partnerships today. We met with Eastside Pathways, we met with Nourishing Networks here at Issaquah, so really trying to understand how to even do that better. Next slide. And just to give you an idea of some of the strategies that were funded, so this just gives you a wide range, so it's really ranging from prenatal all the way up to that age 24. So all kinds of different programming here to benefit youth, children, and families. Next slide. So I want to share with you an executive's proposal for, because Best Starts does expire at the end of the, well, at the end of the year, we're, it will be on the ballot, and this is what reflects what's on the ballot that was put forth based upon community feedback that we received in order to move this forward. So we can go to the next slide. Community really shared with us that we need to maintain what we're doing. We have really good programming that's happening, and are investing earlier prenatal to 5, that 5 to 24 communities of opportunity, and that youth and family homelessness prevention. So we are going to maintain that work, and it will be, all of it will have to be re-RFPed if the levy were to pass, so we can talk about that more. Next slide. I want to build upon what we were doing. One thing that I think I heard you mention a little bit here is just the pandemic really has highlighted lots of different challenges, and we know that youth are really suffering. There's more suicide ideation, there's more need in our, for our youth. So we heard overwhelmingly increasing support for youth. So we're thinking about out-of-school time programming for 5 to 12-year-olds, increasing the opportunity for up to 4 new school-based health centers across King County, and having more work in our transitions to adulthood, so thinking about ages 14 to 24, and that post-secondary completion, employment training, GED, also youth internships, which we heard have been really important for our youth specifically during the pandemic. have been really important for our youth specifically during the pandemic. So that's, we'll do, we'll increase the levy, we'll increase to support that. Next slide. And during the pandemic, actually, the first Best Starts for Kids levy, we heard loud and clear that childcare was a challenge. It continues to remain a challenge, has been a broken system for some time, and I would say the pandemic just highlighted that for, I think, a lot of different people. So we are going to be looking at creating 3,000 new slots for making childcare more affordable through subsidy program. We recognize that there has been a levy that, or a state just passed some exciting legislation to have subsidies for childcare in subsidies as well, but we know that that won't make it all the way through the need for King County, so this is going to really complement that work. And we're committed to partnering with our state partners to make sure that we are not duplicating and making sure that it's really fitting the needs of King County. Also looking at a wage increase project, pilot project. Our childcare workers have, are not paid well, and there's a lot of turnover in our childcare system, so looking at that. Next slide.
And Marcy, this is City Administrator Wally Bobquith. I just need to interrupt for a second. We're having a little bit of a technical difficulty for those who are watching the meeting either on YouTube or on cable television, that we're not seeing the presentation. So I just wanted to let the council know and let you know that for those who are not on the WebEx meeting, that they're not seeing the presentation, we're working to fix the technical glitch, and just wanted to make, those who are watching at home, we, we know we've got a problem and we're working to fix it. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so when we transmitted this over to council in April of 2021, the council supported some really great ads, so I'm going to share those with you as well, so you can go to the next slide. When we, when we created our levy proposal, it was for 820, or I'm sorry, $811 million based on an OWEFA report, or a housing tax report, and that report, the next, after we transmitted, there was more money, the projections were higher the next time in March, so what we, or, I'm sorry, in August, so what we ended up doing, I'm sorry, in July, or April, so what we ended up doing is the council puts forth an ad for expansion of facilities, for new facilities, for facilities that are, to support new construction and also repairs. We know that place, people need places to gather, or really with a focus on housing, childcare, early learning, and recreational facilities. So our base work would start, be available first, and then there could be up to $50 million available for capital investment. Next slide, please. To get back to my point about zip code, we know that one of the council ads will be reporting by zip code. Currently, we are only reporting by our council districts, and some of our programs have been reporting by zip code. That's where I got that thousand number for you, but we know and are committed to doing more of that, so next time, all programs will be required. But keeping in mind that safety issue around domestic violence or citizenship, making sure that we can, with those caveats. Next slide. So the proposed levy moving forward is in total $872 million, like I said. 200 million over the life of the levy would go to childcare, up to 50 million to capital projects. I didn't have a slide in this, but $10 million for capacity building, and this is to make sure that anyone funded by Best Starts or others can apply to get support to do two things, to stabilize their organization through getting support around data support, evaluation support, fiscal monitoring, all the things you need to do, board support to be a really good organization, and then also even to build an organization if you needed one in an area. We've heard there's some gaps. We're going to continue that homelessness prevention, and the rest, all of that comes off the top of the levy, and the next, 50% will go to early learning, 35% or 37% with that increase to sustain the gain. Communities Matter, which is that partnership between the Seattle Foundation and, and Best Starts, will remain the same dollar amount, be 8% of the levy, and data and evaluation for 5%. Next slide, please. So it's a six-year property tax, 19 cents on $1,000 assessed value. Average home in King County is $600,000, so that would cost the person owning that home $114 per year on their property tax. And of course, that varies depending on where you live. For me, it varies on my street. I'm sure you've experienced the same. That March OWEFA report projected revenue was 700, or 872 million, up from the 811 original million when we submitted. And last slide. Just as a timeline, we're in, we did a lot of work for the levy in February through April. April 21, the ballot measure ordinance was approved. The 31st, we are writing an implementation plan now that it's a high level, and we will continue to do ongoing community engagement, as I spoke about, to really understand what's needed to each community before an RFP is released. August 3 is election day. September through November, King County Council will deliberate on the implementation plan if the Best Starts for King, or if the levy were, was approved by voters. And if not approved, the department will develop a sunset plan in order to support the levy if not approved. So new levy begins in January of 2022, and most strategies will be RFPed again in 2022 and 2023.
Thank you, Marcy. I'm going to, great presentation. I'm going to check with the staff, our staff, I'm going to check with the council members to see if any of them have questions, which they may enter in the chat. I think you did touch, yeah, I knew council member, I was going to say, you touched a little bit on a question council member Hall had, so here we go. Council member Hall.
Thank you. This is Council Member Hall, and thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate you coming out. I appreciate too, you mentioning kind of the new state investments in childcare and early learning, capital investments, the subsidy rates. Can you speak a little bit more about how that action, Fair Start for Kids and Best Starts for Kids mesh together and kind of, because I assume the process was, all right, the state has this new investment, now what is the need in the county? How do we fill the rest of the need? So can you walk through that kind of process and how they fit together?
No, it's a great question. Get it, I love that question. It's so exciting. The Fair Start Act, of course, is supporting subsidies, it's supporting head start, early head start programming and home visiting, lots of early learning programming. What we know is that with, specifically our, we, we were really thoughtful about what do we need to do with our, our work around childcare specifically, and we know is the AMI is higher in King County than most areas across the state. So we know that even if the benefit program of Fair Start will be great, but we also know if perhaps a worker at a childcare center gets a dollar raise, that actually often puts them off the benefit cliff, so putting them at a higher, where they won't qualify for subsidies, and they really still can't afford it. So that's where we're thinking about our work, is at that higher, it's not higher, and that's probably the incorrect term, but that benefit cliff is not high enough, but really making sure that people don't fall off the benefit cliff because of the cost of living in King County. And we also have a childcare task force that's made up of 40 experts within King County that's been making recommendations, and we will continue to partner with them, partner with the state to ensure that those are all in sync and working together so that we can have some flexibility if we need to pivot, because we want. But we also know, recognize there's not, even the state subsidy work will not cover King County. Does that make sense?
Looks like Council Member Hall is nodding his head. At this point in time, Marcy, I'm not seeing any additional questions. I'll give the council members a second or two to see if there are any other additional With this presentation this evening, there is no action requested of council, but council may choose to provide direction to schedule a public hearing and prepare a resolution in support of the opposition, so that conversation has yet to happen. Marcy, no question, oh, here we go, Councilor Mertz, question.
Just wondering if we have draft language that would enable a conversation about, basically a draft, a gen, or a draft motion that would, language for a draft motion that would accomplish what you just said, should someone choose to make such a motion? I'm not seeing it.
Yeah, at good of the order this evening, I think you can discuss whether or not you want to have that and make it. You're going to have to have the public hearing as well in order to take the vote, so I think that's a good thing. I'll just make a note that we're talking about it at good of the order.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. Well, thank you, Marcy, for coming, and thank you for the presentation. Council has no additional questions this evening. Appreciate your time.
Wonderful, thank you. Really appreciate being here.
Now go enjoy your solstice this evening, beautiful solstice this evening. Okay, the next item on the agenda this evening is the consent calendar, and it was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed? They have.
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? And I'll just look at the chat to see if anybody enters anything. Okay, is there someone prepared to make a motion this evening? Council President Hunt.
Thank you, this is Council President Hunt. I move to approve the consent calendar as it appears in this evening's agenda.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray.
Second.
Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded, and I'll get the city clerk to take the roll call vote. Beginning with Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Councilmember Mertz.
Aye.
2021 council meeting, council study session, and there is a request this evening to authorize. I'd like to invite City Administrator Wally Bobquith to present the item. Wally?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Good evening again. We continue to have some difficulties with the presentation going out on our various video feeds, so we'll see. My understanding was we were going to try and see if this presentation looked any different, and so we'll, we'll, we'll keep you posted as we're working through the technology. So as the mayor mentioned, I'm here with Lindsay Misbin, our senior accountant, to talk a little bit about the latest with the American Rescue Plan Act. Next slide, please. The purpose of the presentation this evening is to update you on the funding amount that we're receiving through the state of Washington, to summarize our best understanding of the ARPA spending guidelines as they fit today, to authorize the mayor to accept the fund, talk a little bit about our funding strategy for ARPA, and to allocate $45,000 for a recovery coordinator position, which I'll talk about a little bit further in a moment, and then also finally to get additional council feedback on next steps in dealing with ARPA. Next slide. We have talked a few times about Recovery Act funds, and Mayor Pauli's vision really is a very simple one, and that is recover, rebuild, and reimagine. The, the point of the Recovery Act really is just not to recover. Certainly, we've, I think, been more fortunate than many communities already in Issaquah as, as restrictions for the pandemic continue to change, we are beginning to recover. But really, the point of the money from the mayor's perspective is the rebuild and reimagine. What can we do with these funds to move forward and really be transformative in the money that we're receiving from the federal government? So these three visions of the mayor really remain. I think what has changed has been the dollar amount, and I think the timing of how we proceed with all this. Next slide. So we finally have received a final dollar amount through the state of Washington, and that dollar amount is $11,28,857. The, the number that we were working with for some time was $8.6 million. Best that we can tell is that there were formulas used for communities 50,000 in population and greater, and then formulas that were used by the states for passing through funds for those communities 50,000 and less. We are on the very high end of communities in the state of Washington. I think there's only two or three other communities larger than Issaquah in that 50,000 and below, so we are getting a lot of, a very large amount for, among the dollars that are being allocated through the state of Washington. As we understand it, from the state of Washington, once they receive the documents that we're asking authority for the council this evening for the mayor to sign, we will receive approximately $5.5 million in the next couple of weeks, then the remaining dollars will come to the city in 2022. Next slide. We have spent a lot of time trying to better understand the spending guidelines. If you recall from previous council discussions, we have language that was in the enabling legislation, which was passed by the US Congress. Since then, the Treasury Department has come up with lots of guidelines, and so at this point, I'd like to introduce Lindsay Misbin. You know Lindsay from the outstanding work that she does with our audits every year, but she's also taken on an additional role this year with being the point person in our finance department to try to understand where we stand with these spending guidelines. So Lindsay, I'm going to turn over the next part of the presentation to you. Good evening.
Great, good evening. Thank you, City Administrator Bobquith, and good evening, council members. The US Treasury established the spending guidance, guidelines on the ARPA funds on May 17, and they are referred to as the interim final rule. These guidelines are currently in draft form, and they will become final on July 17, thereby allowing a 60-day open comment period for Treasury to hear from local jurisdictions as needed, based on feedback on the guidance. These rules are complex, and they continue to be clarified as people are reviewing and digesting all the material included. We are closely monitoring this, these clarities as they are provided to us to ensure that we have the most updated and relevant information. The use of these funds, by and large, is forward-facing, which means they are to be used on expenditures incurred between March 3, 2021, and December 31, 2024. Under these guidelines, an expense is considered incurred when it is either contracted or the goods are purchased or the services are purchased as well. In turn, Treasury then has allowed a subsequent two-year period for those obligated expenditures to be spent, and that really allows for the time necessary if infrastructure projects are undertaken under these guidelines to set up the necessary contractual requirements and then spend the funding by December 31, 2026. We must adhere to these strict legal, regulatory, and accounting guidelines that have been set by Treasury, but of note, any funding that we provide to individuals to run programs on our behalf, they are referred to as subrecipients, and they are also required to adhere to these strict guidelines as well. This is not unusual in a federal award. All federal awards have to abide by this, but I think it's of importance to note here just due to the complexity of these rules. So what we can't use this funding on are expenses incurred prior to that March 3, 2021 date in most instances. There is some flexibility in the guidance to expend prior to that date, but by and large, we're looking at that March 3, 2021 date. We are not able to use the funding to deposit amounts into pension funds, which is not really applicable to us, but is more applicable at the state level, nor are we allowed to use it for non-federal matches for federal grant programs, principal or interest on debt service, or replenishing or rebuilding reserves, rainy day funds, or contingency funds. What we are allowed to spend it on has been organized by the US Treasury in four overarching categories. Category one has to do with expenditures related to- categories. Category one has to do with expenditures related to responding to the COVID- nineteen pandemic and the negative economic impacts related to the pandemic. The key thing there is that the expenses need to be direct, and it is on the recipient, which is us, the city, to document and justify our analysis to ensure that those expenditures are eligible under these guidelines. Category B relates to premium pay for eligible workers. Under the guidelines, the U.S. Treasury does allow for up to thirteen dollars per hour for eligible workers that are considered essential during the pandemic, and those were folks that did not have the ability to telework, that were on the front lines, interacting with the public continuously, putting themselves at greater risk, handling goods that other folks were also handling. Of interest there, Treasury recommends or strongly recommends retrospective premium pay to go back to the onset of the pandemic, which is considered January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty. However, under Washington state guidelines, Washington state does disallow retrospective pay for work performed. So within our state, any jurisdiction would have to use these funds forward-facing if they want to expend them under category B, which would also include some type of policy development as well. Category C, which is the most flexible and broadest category by design within the guidance, U.S. Treasury provided a revenue loss calculation, which entities can perform to determine the amount of revenue loss due to the pandemic. And then in turn, we are allowed to spend the funding on governmental services up to that amount of lost revenue. And we'll touch more on that in subsequent slides because I think that's a really important piece of the guidelines. Category D is investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. I think one of the most notable items there is that if a recipient chooses to pursue broadband infrastructure, it must be designed so that way it serves both the underserved or unserved communities within a jurisdiction, and Treasury has provided specific download and upload speeds that would define those underserved populations. So before pursuing a project within that realm, the recipient would have to perform some type of analysis or review to determine that those populations were being served by this project. So focusing a little bit more attention on category C, the revenue loss category, as I hit on before, this category really provides the greatest flexibility to recipients. The revenue loss calculation that Treasury provided is very generous, and based on the calculation that we performed in accordance with this guidance, we can claim as much as a twelve-million-dollar loss in revenue through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. So essentially, we could take the entire eleven-million-dollar amount in our funding allocation and spend it all through category C, up to the twelve-million dollars, if that was so chosen. One of the important points there as well is that the revenue loss calculation is entity-wide. It's not fund-specific. So you're not restricted from spending in a certain fund up to revenue loss by fund. You can really calculate it at the entity-wide level and then choose to spend it on anything identified as a government service. And government services are anything that are just direct services or aid to city residents, pay-as-you-go infrastructure, so the non-finance portion of an infrastructure project, which also includes roads and transportation. It's important to note here, too, that this is really the only area of the guidance that offers that broad flexibility to invest in roads and transportation infrastructure. The guidelines also specifically mention cybersecurity, healthcare, education, and public safety expenses. So within those four broad categories that we just mentioned, there are numerous rules and eligibility requirements that the city must still adhere to. So this would likely mean that as the city moves forward in developing the ARPA spending plan, there would need to be a careful review to evaluate those spending plan decisions against this guideline, these guidelines, to ensure that we are expending it in a way that makes it eligible and compliant under the guidelines. And we in finance are definitely prepared to assist with that review, as well as coordinating with other subject matter experts in the city who might be administering the programs or expending the funds, as well as the city attorney to make sure we're adhering to any legal and contractual requirements as well. And lastly, I just want to conclude by saying that Treasury did build in an accountability element to the use of these funds. On an annual basis, we must report to Treasury how we've expended these funds, and the report is through expenses as of September thirtieth of each year, due on October thirty-first of each year. So the first report will be coming up on October thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-one. And with that, that concludes my portion of the presentation, so I'll go ahead and turn it back over to City Administrator Bobcovich.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much, Lindsay. So this next slide talks about some of the feedback that we had the last time we spoke about the ARPA funds, and I just wanted to put that up to remind the council of your discussion and also the feedback that we got from the mayor's recovery task force. First was the need to determine what acute, urgent needs of the community and city partners are, and we'll talk more about that in a moment. Also, the emphasis that there's time to spend the money so that there's also time to plan for use for funds. The council's input was a portion where the push for non-urgent needs should really go to the two thousand and twenty-two budget process. The administration concurs with that. The support for restoring lost city revenues, as you heard from Ms. Misbin, you know, there's much more flexibility with that than we initially thought, and really frees up the entire amount of money to be put under that category and then allow the city council to allocate those funds in a much broader way than we previously anticipated. Ideas of working with funding partners, important to monitor possible delayed impact of the pandemic. Again, I think we're very much in the reopening phase in all parts of the country, certainly here in Issaquah, King County, but I think we're not out of the woods completely, and that's important to remember. And then there was some mention from the council regarding specific support for investing in the arts and the newly-approved Creative Arts District as to help with the economic recovery. So that's just a quick summary of those discussion points for April twenty-sixth. Next slide? So with all that said, the administration is here this evening to put forward a strategy moving forward. The first point is to create a single point of contact for all ARPA programs to support Issaquah residents' businesses, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. With that, position to evaluate current immediate needs in the community. The council had talked several weeks ago about funding for nonprofits. That item was continued while we waited to get a final dollar amount. The administration this evening is recommending that rather than come up with a specific program for nonprofits, that we go through this evaluation of community needs and report back to you at the beginning of August with that information. Third point would be to continue to evaluate lost revenue. I think just even in the last several days, we feel very comfortable with the analysis that Ms. Misbin had given. There continues to be additional guidance coming out from the Treasury Department, so we want to certainly keep an eye on that. But it would look as if the lost revenue that we have exceeds the money that we've been allocated from the federal government. Next would be to come back to the council on August sixth with a review of what immediate needs we've identified and perhaps move forward with some specific funding recommendations. But otherwise, the last point, to develop a longer-term funding strategy to be considered with the proposed FY two thousand and twenty-two budget. Next slide? So in order to move this forward, we're recommending that forty-five thousand dollars of the Recovery Act dollars be allocated for a recovery coordinator position, and we've asked Benton Kobalist, our economic development specialist, to take this on. So what this money represents is basically the half a year of his salary, so that we would reallocate his time as the recovery coordinator for the balance of the fiscal year. His job would be to connect with businesses and nonprofits, to connect with federal resources that are available for recovery that are in addition to the monies that the city has received. Certainly, King County, state of Washington, federal agencies of all stripe have received ARPA money, and we want to make sure that we get a sense of what's needed in the community and how we can connect community members, business owners, with funds outside of the allocation that the city of Issaquah has received. And again, that we would come back in August with any immediate needs, but otherwise, continue to focus on spending with the two thousand and twenty-two budget. And as Ms. Misbin indicated, we believe very comfortably that that forty-five thousand dollars would be allowable under the category A requirements. Next slide? So the next steps, we would, with the council's approval of the actions before you this evening, authorizing the mayor to submit the appropriate documentation to the state of Washington to receive the funds and to move forward with the forty-five thousand dollar allocation. We would come back on August second with an update from the recovery coordinator with potential funding recommendations, and then otherwise come back as part of the budget. Next slide? Let me once again reinforce Mayor Polly's vision of the spending of these funds, recover, rebuild, and reimagine. I think we've learned a lot in the few months since the Congress approved this package and was signed by President Biden. Many of our neighbor communities are still in the midst of sorting through this, and I think that we have time. We want to make sure that any other immediate needs are met of our residents, but really, the administration is proposing that we take the time to be thoughtful on those last two elements, to rebuild and reimagine. That this is a once-in-our-professional-lifetime windfall. We will never see something of this magnitude. Again, I would imagine, certainly not from the federal government, and so the opportunity to be thoughtful and make sure that money is being used to rebuild, and especially to reimagine, to make sure that we're leveraging these funds to make Issaquah an even greater, stronger place than it already is. Next slide? Again, the recommendation is to authorize the mayor to accept the ARPA funds and to allocate the forty-five thousand dollars. Those are the two actions before you. I believe that is the last slide. Lindsay, if it is? And let's go ahead and take down the presentation. And Madam Mayor, members of the council, Ms. Misbin and I are ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, City Administrator Bobcovich. I see Deputy Council President Ray has a question.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Chris Ray. Two questions, actually. And I know you said this, and I just missed it. When do we expect that the money, the first tranche of money from the ARPA would be arriving here at the city?
Deputy Council President Ray, members of the council, our understanding from the state of Washington is that they will be able to process the money within several days after receiving the documents from us. So we would expect to see it, I'll say, in the next week or two. Several days seems awfully optimistic, but the next week or two. So imminently.
Okay, pretty immediately. We're not talking into the year, anything like that.
That's correct.
Great. And then are there plans to backfill our economic development specialist?
Yes, that would be the reason for the allocation. So in talking with Ms. Davis Hayes, we want to make sure she has the flexibility. It would likely be contract work. We've not, we don't really know, you know, how much of Benton's time this will take. We're assuming it's going to be a hundred percent. It may not be. We just want to have that flexibility. We don't want to lose any momentum with our other economic development initiatives, so this would make sure that there's funds available to keep those going.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Council President Ray. I'm not seeing any other questions in the chat, but I will give a few minutes or a minute for council to decide if they have more questions, and if not, I would be looking for somebody to make a motion. And let's see, Council President Hunt.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I move to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the necessary documents authorizing the Washington State Office of Financial Management to transfer American Rescue Plan Act funds to the city of Issaquah and authorize the allocation of forty-five thousand dollars of American Rescue Plan Act funds for the recovery coordinator position, and direct the finance director to include forty-five thousand dollars for the recovery coordinator position in a subsequent two thousand and twenty-one budget amendment.
Thank you. And Deputy Council President Ray?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Keeping my eye on the chat again. Council President Hunt.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I do support the actions that are before us this evening, and on the broader discussion about the use of the funds, I wanted to only add that we do have the strategic plan, and I think that having some of the bigger conversations through the budget process, which we will also be discussing, the strategic plan, the check-in of the strategic plan during that budget process, I think that will allow us to incorporate those actions. But I think that the use of the strategic plan is really important for how we consider the ways in which we rebuild and recover going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Would anybody else have a comment or discussion? I'll give it a few seconds. Sometimes we have a delay. Okay, I'm not seeing any other comments at this time, so if there is no further discussion, the motion before council is to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the necessary documents authorizing the Washington State Office of Financial Management to transfer American Rescue Plan Act funds to the city of Issaquah and authorize the allocation of forty-five thousand dollars of American Rescue Plan Act funds for the recovery coordinator position, and direct the finance director to include forty-five thousand dollars for the recovery coordinator position in a subsequent two thousand and twenty-one budget amendment. City Clerk, can you call the roll, the vote?
Yes, beginning with Councilmember Marts.
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember De Michelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you, City Clerk. That passes unanimously. We are now moving into the good of the order, and I did hear two different requests this evening. In Councilmember Hall's committee reports, he talked about providing a Cascade update and potential future requests for feedback from the council, and Councilmember Marts indicated a desire to discuss potential endorsement of the Best Starts for Kids levy. So Councilmember Hall, did you want to start?
Sure. Thanks, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember Hall. I'm happy to start tonight. So just kind of an update on what's been going on in the Cascade world, because we're hoping to get your feedback, not just tonight, but over the next few months and into the fall. So the board is kind of approaching an important decision about the future of the Lake Taps reservoir project, and we wanted to keep you updated along the process. So if you have any questions or comments, we could make sure to bring those up at future board meetings and then come back. So by way of a brief background, just in case you don't already know, back in two thousand and nine, Cascade purchased the Lake Taps reservoir project from Puget Sound Energy. It's intended to serve as municipal drinking water supply for our future, and it's about a billion-dollar capital utility project. A few other quick notes that we've learned, the model for some utility jurisdictions, when it comes to capital financing, is to put away twenty percent in revenues to fund the project, and that's what Cascade staff would like to do, and they've told the board that we need to start doing that soon. So we're beginning that discussion this week, and it should run through September, I think. Mayor Polly, feel free to correct me if that's wrong. There are some concerns at the board level we wanted to highlight with you, one regarding water supply and one regarding ratepayers. So first, you know, it's possible our region may never need that water supply in Lake Taps, or at least not in our lifetimes, especially if Seattle continues to have an abundance of clean, affordable drinking water and continues to sell directly to Cascade into the future. So that's one concern. And then the second concern is, you know, there are concerns around collecting funds from ratepayers now for a project that might not necessarily be built in the future. So then the questions would be, you know, what do we do with those collected dollars if not Lake Taps reservoir project? Can collected dollars even be returned? Can collected dollars even be returned? Is there a way to put restrictions around those dollars so they don't fall back into Cascade fund balance or something like that? So anyways, that's where we're just starting to get into that at the board level. So if you have any kind of questions about any of that, any comments on the concerns that the board has laid out so far, any additional comments you might have thought of that we didn't think of yet? We have about three months we'll be discussing this, so if you can't think of anything right now, that's fine. You can always email us too if a concern or an idea strikes you in the middle of the night. Mayor Polly, was there anything else you wanted to add?
Well, the middle-of-the-night thing is no, no, no. Tell us, we'll email or text us the next day. Just kidding. That was a really great summary. I think the reality is that Cascade has multiple choices for a future water source, including connecting to different pipelines that already exist, one in the north and one down in Pierce County. And so there should, there would be construction of some form, of some capital asset. So the board is noodling around over the possibility of having the proposals reviewed or the fund balance reviewed every two years in conjunction with the budget. So while this is not project approval that we'd be coming back to you for, but more approval of this development fund, that would allow a touch point every two years. And then if the project changes from Lake Taps to the Pierce County cross-county connection, that would have a lower price tag, and the accumulation of funds could be slowed down. So those are kind of the swirling issues right now. And it looks like we do have a question from Deputy Counsel President Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Chris Ray. Council President Hunt was in front of me, though.
Oh, comment first from Council President Hunt, and then a question. Council President Hunt.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Hall, for the update on this. I formally served on the Cascade Water Alliance Board as the alternate to Mayor Polly. And I think from my perspective that one of the important components here is that there were very different projections for the demands for water when the Lake Taps Reservoir Project was first contemplated than what the projections for the demand for water look like now. And part of that is people are using less water, and part of that, too, is people in multifamily buildings and just the shift of how much water each person is expected to be using in the future. And so what I think would be useful, and you mentioned this, that we expect that if we were to need this, it might not be for a long time. I think, to put a finer point on that, what would be useful is to have some updated projections about with the reduced demands on water in our region, including Seattle, where we're currently able to acquire water at a good rate, as you mentioned. What are the projections for the future, and how many years out are we talking, and what do the current demand profiles look like? I think that's an important part, and I think that's something that we've talked about, and I think it would help clarify some of the decision-making.
Council President Hunt, that's excellent. Councilmember Hall and I will be going to Cascade Retreat where we talk about this, and we have seen some updated projections. And I think we can ask Cascade to come and show those projections as well. So that would be helpful. And Deputy Counsel President Ray.
I am so glad that I deferred to Council President, because that was my question that she quite well addressed, so thank you very much.
That's great. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. Stacey Goodman here. I think the mayor made a comment that was exactly the same as my comment, and that is, can Cascade come here and make the presentation about what the projections are? And along with that, and maybe now is not exactly the time, since you're going to be talking about it for three months, so maybe not next, I don't know, but before everything is formed, I think maybe they should take their pony show out to their members and get some direct feedback.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. That's a great comment. When this was circulating through the board, there was the intention of just calling for the vote on the development fund at the board, and there were several cities that said, oh, like, of course the vote can be here, but, you know, we have to go home and talk to our team about a billion-dollar project. You gotta, you gotta have, you gotta come out and show them some stuff. So Councilmember Hall, do you have everything you need to comfortably relay back that there are some additional concerns and a request for some, a presentation?
I think so, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember Hall. So kind of what I'm hearing is, you know, trying to get more in-depth on projections for water demand, given a lot of different variables, and also having them come out sometime when we're closer to the end to give a presentation on that and everything else.
That's great.
Does that capture everything?
I am not seeing any other comments in the chat, but I'll give it a second. Councilmember Goodman?
Yeah, Councilmember Hall mentioned something, I think you said closer to the end. I don't know what that means, but it just means, I think we need to have it soon enough so before they start getting set in their ways regarding what they would like to propose that they're hearing from all their members. So maybe tomorrow's not the right day, but I'm not sure that the end of three months is right either. So I'll leave that up to you and the mayor to decide. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on that? Otherwise, we'll move to Councilmember Martz's good of the order. You're on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So procedurally, do I need to move something before we discuss it, or can we discuss it before I move something?
I think that right now you can just discuss it, and the clerk or the city manager can advise after the discussion what type of action you might need.
She actually was kind enough to already said something, should we be so inclined. So, I mean, just a question from my fellow council members, whether we want to hear pros and cons of this and consider. We, I believe, supported the last one four years ago, so I'm interested in hearing from my fellow council members. I'm not looking to take a pro or a con position this evening, but I'm interested in knowing if we want to do that. We've got a potential motion before us if we want to.
Great. I will go to Councilmember De Michele.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. I would like to have the council consider this at a future meeting as well, and I know that there's time sensitivity here, but I believe that this would fit in well with the schedule that was put before us tonight. So I would support the idea of listening to our community and getting both pro and con comments before us and moving forward with the resolution. Thank you.
Great. So I may have missed Councilmember Martz, but is it in the chat, the actual motion?
No, she actually sent it via email.
Okay, great. Okay, is there anyone who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thanks.
I'd like to move to direct administration to prepare a resolution in support of the Best Starts for Kids levy for consideration by the council at the July 19 council meeting and schedule a related public hearing for the July 19, 2021 council meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. And Councilmember De Michele?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any additional discussion or comments on the motion? Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you.
And then Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. So this is just a procedural question, directing the administration to prepare a resolution in support of, before we hear the, before we have the hearing and the pros and cons, that just sounds, I don't remember what we've done before. Maybe that's what we've done before. It sounds like the cart before the horse, but, so maybe somebody can respond to that.
Sure, I'll let the city clerk explain why it's written that way or what might have been passed practice, or Administrator Bob Kowits. Either one of you can take the questions. I think there's a couple different ways to do this. De Michele?
If Clerk Keizer wants to come in, otherwise I will.
Sure, Councilmember Goodman. We are limited in the amount of time before the election, so while a public hearing is our recommended course of action to ensure we're hearing from both sides, I think due to timing, it would be beneficial to have a resolution prepared for council consideration and potential amendment at the same meeting on July 19.
So, City Clerk, just to clarify, this motion could just be amended to say, to not support or to do something different?
Well, I, what I was saying is that we would prepare, based on this motion that's before the council now, there'd be a resolution prepared in support. But at that meeting, following the public hearing, the council would have that resolution before them and could choose to modify it at that time.
Councilmember Goodman, does that answer your question or concern?
I don't, like I said, I don't remember what we've done in the past, but, and I understand the, I think the election is, what, the 3rd or something, August 3? I understand the timing. It just seems to, put it out in a packet, says, it almost says we're going to support it anyway. That's, that's all I'm saying. I wish there was a different way we could do it, but...
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Hall with a question, and Council President Hunt with a question.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Hall. Just a quick process question, because I heard it was like, you know, we would get some pros and con speakers. Can someone walk us through kind of what that evening would look like? From a presentation perspective, are we finding pro and con speakers from out in the community? How are they, do they, are they already selected, or are we just relying on folks to join, and then we have equal numbers? How does that work?
Madam Mayor, Members of the council, let me maybe take a crack at this. What we would need to do is, there is already a group organized that is in favor of the initiative. We would offer them an opportunity to speak. We would also look to see if there's organized opposition. If there's organized opposition, we would have them speak. I think if we are unable to find organized opposition, we would just have an opportunity, if someone were to choose to step forward as an individual who wished to speak in opposition, then we would have that opportunity. But first, we would look for any organized opposition. I don't believe that there is any for this initiative, but I think if the statute is contemplated, in many cases there is, a vote no and a vote yes on any particular initiative. So we'll do that, well, those presentations will be made, there'll be public comment available under the public hearing, and then the council can act on the resolution. And if the council is so persuaded by the arguments, as the city clerk indicated, that resolution can easily be amended to change what the council's considering. But I don't think that it's an unusual thing to ask for something to be prepared in support or opposition prior to this public hearing. I don't think that there's any transparency issues or presupposition issues. I think that's a fairly standard practice.
Thank you. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. Quick question on timing. I do believe that while this is before the end of the election, that ballots will have gone out already by the time of this July 19 meeting, and just wanted to make sure that that isn't a issue.
Is that a question of whether or not it's an issue for issuing the resolution or whether or not the council has a concern with issuing it after?
Well, I guess my question was meant to be a question for the, probably city clerks or city administration about if it's, taking a position after the ballots have been mailed out is okay, and then if there is an issue with council, but I was meaning it for the administration.
Okay. So we'll do, City Clerk, or Jim Haney turned his camera on. Jim?
I'm just going to say that there is nothing that prevents you from taking a position after the ballots are mailed out. There's nothing in the law that prevents you from doing that.
Administrator Bob Kowits?
Ditto.
Good to. Okay, I'm not seeing anything else in the chat, so I will reread the motion to direct the administration to prepare a resolution in support of the Best Starts for Kids levy for consideration by the council at the July 19 council meeting and schedule a related public hearing for the July 19, 2021 council meeting. And I will turn it over to the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Starting with Deputy Counsel President Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh.
Aye.
Councilmember De Michele.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Councilmember Martz.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Are there any other items for good of the order before I ask the city administrator to make a comment on 10A, which is a reference to the Capital Finance Community Task Force, which caused a little confusion today? Any other items? Okay. City Administrator Bob Kowits, there were some questions today about the item under good of the order.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Members of the council, the item was posted to the agenda prematurely, so there are not appointments ready to be made.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. There are some upcoming council meetings. City Council Study Session is on Tuesday, June 29, with potential agenda items, including a mobility overview, King County Metro update, Squawk and Talus Shuttle, Intelligent Transportation Systems Program, and the Newport Way Maple to Sunset Project. On July 6, the regular city council meeting has been canceled. People can go to Consets on the Green instead. City Council Study Session is Tuesday, July 13. The potential agenda items include the Equity Board Proposal and the Equity Lend Discussion. There was an executive session held prior to tonight's meeting, and there being no further business on our agenda this evening, this June 21 solstice council meeting is adjourned at 6:21. Go enjoy what's left of it. Have a good night.